I would like to welcome everyone to the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one work session of the Henrico County School Board. At this time, I would like to make note of Ms. Ogburn's and Ms. Atkins' physical absence from today's work session. Both previously notified myself, the Chair, of their request to participate electronically from remote locations. Our school board policy, P two dash zero four dash zero zero six, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations requires a majority vote of the board members present at the primary or central meeting location to allow a board member to participate in a meeting from a remote location. In accordance with this school board policy, do I hear a motion to approve Ms. Ogburn's and Ms. Atkins' participation in today's work session from remote location?
Still moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Consella. I will now do roll call vote. Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Ms. Ogburn's and Ms. Atkins' request to participate in this meeting from remote locations have been approved. This meeting is being live streamed on the HCPS website. We'll begin our meeting with a roll call. When I call your name, please verbally indicate your presence. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Present.
Ms. Ogburn?
I'm here.
Ms. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that a quorum of the board was physically present, and Ms. Ogburn and Ms. Atkins are participating electronically from remote location. I ask that Ms. Ogburn and Ms. Atkins verbally note if they need to leave the meeting, and subsequently note when they return. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
The move by Mrs. Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins?
Ms. Ogburn.
Ms. Ogburn, thank you. Roll call vote, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogburn?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is the election of school board chair. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to Chapter Seven, Title twenty-two point one of the Code of Virginia, the superintendent should conduct the election of a new chair of the school board for two thousand and twenty-one, and so it is my pleasure and privilege to conduct the election of the school board chair for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one, and thereafter until his or her successor is elected and qualified. Are there any nominations for the position of school board chair?
I nominate Ms. Ogburn.
I hear Reverend Cooper nominating Mrs. Ogburn. Are there other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion on the nomination of Mrs. Ogburn as chair?
Still moved.
All right, moved by Mrs. Shea. We will now have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
And Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Hearing no opposition or any abstentions, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Ogburn, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And so I will work on the next set of items, which is the reorganization, and the next item of business is the election of our vice chair. But before we do that, I want to say thank you to our review for your confidence. And I want to just note that obviously this year has been a year of challenges, and it's been especially challenging for our families and staff, and I want to take the opportunity to thank Reverend Cooper for serving as our chair for the last year. It's certainly, as I said, been a year of challenges like no other. Your guidance and your steady hand have been remarkable, and I want to express my appreciation for your support, your steadfast service to the families of Henrico and to the board. I know that I speak for all of us when we appreciate your willingness to serve in this capacity in the last year. I think you will notice that you have a small token of our appreciation right there that the clerk has assured me. Is it there?
It is, I see something.
You can open it at your convenience. If you want to, you can do it now, but it's a little remembrance. It isn't probably a year you don't want to forget, but you can keep that keepsake.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. And I'm going to move on to conduct the election of vice chair for the school board for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. And thereafter, reading the fine print, until his or her successor is elected and qualified. Are there any nominations for the position of vice chair? I will make one, and I'm going to nominate Marcy Shea as vice chair of the school board. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion for the nomination of Marcy Shea as vice chair?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I will do a roll call vote, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye, the ayes have it. Are there, there are no objections, opposition? Congratulations, Mrs. Shea, you are now Madam Vice Chair. Okay, and we will move on to the, conduct the election of those individuals to serve as clerk and deputy clerk to the school board. By school board policy, nominations for these two offices come from our superintendent. So Dr. Cashwell, do you have a nomination for clerk and deputy clerk?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to nominate Mrs. Kathy Harris as clerk to the board and Ms. Tiffany Burton as deputy clerk to the board for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one and thereafter until their successors are elected and qualified.
Hearing no other nominations for clerk and deputy clerk, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion on the nomination of Mrs. Harris as clerk to the school board and Ms. Burton as the deputy clerk to the board? Thank you, Mrs. Atkins, for that nomination. I'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Atkins, I assume you vote aye?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and congratulations to Mrs. Harris and Ms. Burton. And I think I speak for all of us when I say thank you for all the work that you do every single day. It is amazing. Okay, and next, we will, and this is kind of like housekeeping every year that we have to do all of these things. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section twenty-two point one dash seven six, the school board is required to approve a designee of the division superintendent to attend meetings of the school board in her absence or inability of the superintendent to attend. Dr. Cashwell, do you have a recommendation for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to recommend Dr. Beth Tigan, Chief of Staff, as the superintendent's designee to attend school board meetings in my absence or inability to attend.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation of Dr. Beth Tigan, who is Chief of Staff, as the superintendent's designee?
Still moved.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Atkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. Yes, it, next, it is my recommendation that the school board establish the second and fourth Thursdays of each month as the meeting days of the county school board of Henrico County, Virginia, to comply with Chapter Seven, Title twenty-two point one of the Code of Virginia, noting that as meeting dates may be added or changed throughout the year as necessary.
Is there a motion to approve the second and fourth Thursdays of each month as the meeting days for the county school board of Henrico County, Virginia?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Now I'll do a roll call vote, Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote, I vote aye, there, no one's opposed, the motion passes, thank you. And I wanted to make note of our committee assignments. A lot of people don't know this, but as members of the school board, we do serve on a number of committees, and so I'm just going to read those out for the record. Our school board advisory committees are the Career, Technical, Education, Business Advisory Council, and Mrs. Shea is our representative there. The Equity Diversity in Advisory Committee, we have Reverend Cooper sitting on that. I sit on the Gifted Education Advisory Council, and Mrs. Atkins, who has the heavy lift these days of being on the School Health Advisory Board, and the Special Education Advisory Committee is also Mrs. Atkins. There are some superintendent advisory committees. The Audit Committee is served by Reverend Cooper and Mrs. Consella. The English Learner Advisory Committee is served by Mrs. Consella, and the Henrico Healthy Family Community Advisory Committee is served by Mrs. Atkins, as is the Instructional Materials Review Committee. And the Policy Committee is Mrs. Consella and myself, and the Strategic Planning Committee is Mrs. Consella and Mrs. Shea. We have some external committees, as well, some of these are regional programs. For example, Code RBA Regional High School is represented by Mrs. Shea. The Henrico County Self-Insurance Trust Committee is represented by Mrs. Consella. The Henrico County Vocational Technical Education Foundation representative is Reverend Cooper. I will sit on the, and represent us on the Henrico Education Foundation. The Henrico Police Athletically representative is Mrs. Atkins, and I am the representative to the Maggie L. Walker Regional School Board, and Mrs. Shea is the alternate to that board. Does anybody have any discussion about our committee assignments before we move on? Okay, I think we're good. Our next item of business is closed session. It is, we move into a closed meeting for discussion of matters covered under Items A one and A eight of Section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees and consultant consultation with legal counsel pertaining to the actual litigation, requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel specifically regarding DJ at all versus Henrico County School Board at all, where such consultation in briefing and in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Is there a motion to move into closed session for these purposes?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Ms. Consella, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll do a roll call, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the motion carries, we are now in closed.
I do, I am recommending that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel. Seeking your approval on the appointment of administrative personnel, please.
Still moved.
Oh, thank you, I clicked out, I'm sorry. Is there a motion approved, okay, and, made, motion made by Mrs. Shea, seconded by Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion carries, the administrative appointment is approved. And I think we're going to move on to our health committee update.
Yes, thank you, members of the board. You have approved Jody Bailey as Associate Principal of Springfield Park Elementary School. The next item is our health committee update, and before we begin that, I just want to take a moment to reiterate to our community our unwavering commitment to return to in-person instruction for students who chose that option. As most of you know, we have since September been serving students in select groups, including special education, English learners, pre-K, and high school career and technical education for limited in-person opportunities in our schools. We understand the importance of in-person learning, and we continue to strive towards bringing more students back for these critically important face-to-face learning experiences. Our ongoing efforts to ensure that we are responsive to our students' academic and social emotional well-being led us and this board to vote in October on a timeline for bringing more students into our classrooms for in-person learning. The pauses, delays, and changes in plans since then have been hard on all of our stakeholders, our students foremost, our families, our staff. The road to where we get, the road to where we are today has been arduous, it has been an ever-changing one. We were firm in our message that we communicated about our timeline to our families for returning to in-person on January fifth, that timeline we communicated on January fifth. But the next day, we learned officially in a governor's announcement that school staff would be included in Group One B for vaccinations. And soon after that, we heard the incredibly positive news from the dedicated teams, both in county government and our local health department, about collaborative efforts to undertake this effort in an expedited manner. In a pandemic where information changes almost daily, this imminent availability of vaccines for our staff was simply unknown at the time we set our timeline on January fifth. While we knew that vaccines were a future possibility, we did not expect them so soon. But how fortunate we are to live in a place where this kind of teamwork and dedication to our schools and community exists. Given this new and very promising development, we revised our timeline for expanded in-person learning, understanding that while all of the logistics about what would come next with the vaccination effort were unknown, getting through the vaccinating of Phase One expeditiously is a shared priority. I once more humbly ask for patience and forgiveness from those of you who have opted to return their students in person and showed tremendous confidence in our health risk mitigation planning. I share your heartache, your frustration over the continuous delays to our timelines, and I know how very important it is for our students to have access to in-person learning. Let there be no doubt about the overwhelming good that will come from getting through vaccinating all of Phase One expeditiously. This is a tremendously positive step for the entire Henrico community. More vaccinations as quickly as possible means less spread in our own community and sets us all on a path towards getting back to normal in all aspects of our life, including school. We will now hear from our health committee with updates on this effort and what's next. Dr. Tigan?
Share my screen. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Ms. Robin Gilbert, the supervisor of School Health Services, and I are here again today to share an update from the HCPS Health Committee. Dr. Veray, our friend, is from the Health Department, is also here on the line to answer any technical questions related to the current health metrics or the vaccinations. The Health Committee has met weekly for the past three weeks. After each meeting, our superintendent was updated. After last Monday's meeting, the Division Leadership Team was updated and discussed next steps. The local and regional data was reviewed, and the two core indicators related to community spread continue to be at the highest risk category as we looked at them this past Monday. The number of new cases per one hundred thousand persons within the last fourteen days was eight hundred and twenty-seven. That was Monday. On Tuesday, today, that number is down slightly at eight hundred and eighteen point eight. The percent positivity for the last fourteen days was at thirteen point nine percent on Monday, and today it is marginally less at thirteen point eight percent. While we have put an equal emphasis on the three core indicators, recent guidance from our health professionals is for schools to put a much greater emphasis on the ability of our schools to implement the five key mitigation strategies that are a part of the third core indicator. While we know community spread is high, we know we have not had outbreaks resulting from spread between adults and students and students and adults. This is after many months of having over a thousand students in our schools for limited in-person learning, and then additional students in our schools for childcare. At the January fourth Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee meeting, Dr. Avula stated he was not aware of another school system who has invested what Henrico has to ensure the safety of staff and students. His confidence in our mitigation efforts were strong. In addition to reviewing the health metrics, the Health Committee reviewed student progress data as well. During first quarter, we saw an increase in the number of students across all grade levels who have missed five or more days of school since the start of the year. And also, when looking at student progress, we saw that the number of students failing one or more classes had also increased across all grade levels. The mental health data from the Henrico Area Mental Health and Developmental Services on access to youth and family services continues to show an increase in access, with the Crisis Intervention Team indicating that there's been a decrease in referrals. This increase in community mental health access and lower referral rates internally is concerning. While the school-based mental health teams continue to provide for students' mental health needs, needed referrals may not be occurring due to the decrease in face-to-face interaction. Many students do not turn on their cameras during classroom instruction, making it impossible for teachers to evaluate where students are. Overall, while some students are thriving in the virtual world, others are struggling, and this aligns with the feedback we have received from families since the start of the school year. As you may recall, as Dr. Cashwell just shared, on Tuesday, January fifth, we shared our timeline to return to school. And then on Wednesday, January sixth, the governor announced school staff would be considered essential workers and be included in Group One B immunizations. This was new and exciting news. Later that week, the county reached out to schools to begin planning for what would, what it would look like for Henrico County. The true impact was unknown, and we adjusted our timeline to assist with the efforts and provide staff with access to the vaccine, and the only constant seemed to be change, rapid change. We adjusted our timeline to assist with efforts and provide staff access to vaccinations. We anticipated these efforts would impact our timeline and wanted to be transparent with our families. So where are we now? Henrico will be going into Phase One B on Monday, January eighteenth, and the Health Department, county, and schools are currently working feverishly to prepare for the first immunization events in Henrico next week. Tuesday evening, I learned the Regional Incident Management Team, or Regional IMT as it's referred to, was being reformed to provide greater collaboration for the immunization process, thus lessening the impact on our school staff. Still, about half of our nurses will be assisting with the immunization efforts next week during the day and possibly evenings. Specifically, they will be assisting on February twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second of next week, while the others remain in schools to support our students participating in limited in-person instruction. Days for nurses to assist the following week have not been determined. As you can imagine, the immunization administration process is still evolving as needed along the way. The one thing, though, that has not changed is the county's and the Health Department's support of schools in making our staff a priority in the immunization process. The Health Department has asked all employers to prioritize front-public, student-facing employees first from the lens of increased face-to-face exposure and inability to telework, and are relying on us as employers to determine who those individuals are. We are working through this process, but we are hoping the efforts of the Regional Incident Management Team to hold mass vaccination events where the county is prioritizing our employees will hopefully be able to accommodate our staff in a very quick fashion. Our staff was surveyed on Monday and Tuesday of this week to determine the preliminary numbers of immunization dosages needed. The survey provided access to a Virginia Department of Health Town Hall presentation that had been shared last Friday afternoon to key health liaisons in the various public and private schools in the Richmond area. We wanted them to have some basis from which to decide how likely they were to participate in the immunization process. The next steps include holding a Henrico Health Department-led town hall meeting for our staff to provide information about the vaccine and answer questions. And we will be providing our staff with the date, time, location, and registration process for immunization, because as you can see from our data, we had a considerable number of staff wanting to participate. Now, not all staff responded to the survey, as it was a quick turnaround. However, we are far above the national average of about fifty to sixty percent that chose to participate in the Phase One A immunization process. And so we know that some, that school employees will begin, as they are a priority, next Wednesday, and continue immunization through Friday. If needed, the Regional IMT plan is to hold an additional vaccination event on Saturday, January twenty-third. I know I've received questions about which vaccine staff will receive, and what we've been told is the expectation is it will be the Moderna vaccine. With this vaccine, the first injection starts the body's building of antibodies. During the first two weeks post-injection, this is estimated to build a fifty percent coverage. The second vaccine is given four weeks after the initial shot and requires two weeks after administration to reach full effectiveness, which is reported to be ninety-five percent effectiveness. The logistics to potentially immunize sixty-six thousand or more HCPS staff members, including full-time and part-time staff, temporary employees, and prep participants, is a massive undertaking. Again, we have seventy-three point four percent of our staff that have responded that they are likely, or very likely, to participate in the vaccination process. Total, we had a total of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five of our ten thousand one hundred and fifty-eight staff that responded to the survey. As we worked to collaborate with Henrico County to immunize those who want to be immunized, schools continue to work to fill vacancies for various temporary positions. We are currently short thirty clinic aides out of sixty-two positions. This number has decreased by two in the last day. HR is working with schools to get these positions filled as soon as possible. The Health Committee decided to continue to meet weekly for the foreseeable future. So our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January nineteenth, as Monday, January eighteenth is a holiday. And again, as Dr. Cashwell indicated, the recommendation would be for the school board to have a discussion at the January twenty-eighth meeting when we can provide an update on the immunization process and progress and have a discussion about next steps in our timeline moving forward. And at this point, Ms. Gilbert, Dr. Veray, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. you might have regarding the Health Committee update or the immunization process.
I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute. I'll start with Ms. Atkins. Do you have any questions for Dr. Tiggen or the team?
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen, for that update. I know that you shared that we'll get additional information on the 28th regarding the process very quickly. I did want to ask, you know, as far as the process goes, my understanding is just for the patient or any individual, they come in, they get their shot, and then they are monitored for a certain period of time, and then they will receive a card or some sort of notification when to come back. On the 28th, I would hope that we can define exactly what the nurse role and responsibilities are, and particularly just to better understand that we want to ensure that while we're having a great partnership, and that's what this is going to take, it's also important to understand the specific role that our nurses is going to play, because it is a lengthy process, and whether their particular role is going to be to give the shot under physician's care, if their role is going to be to monitor for adverse conditions after getting the shot, et cetera. So I'm just sharing that, because that would be my expectation on the 28th to hear more about that. I would also want to better understand from, that's sort of the clinical side of the house, but from the administrative side of the house, I'd want to better understand how it's organized from a claims perspective, and also better understand who's paying for the services. So I don't know if the nurses will still be under Henrico County Public Schools, or will they sort of be employees of the Health Department? That's, again, more on the administrative side of the house, because they would need to be under a physician to disseminate these vaccines. So these are some of the answers to, you know, that I would expect, you know, on the 28th. So I'm going to pause to allow my colleagues to ask their most, you know, priority questions.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Reverend Cooper, I'll let you go next.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Tiggen, for the update in regards to current status and basically, you know, where we are until our next meeting in regards to. So, you know, I will be looking forward to receiving, you know, what the metrics are and with the next steps, and so I look forward to hearing that dialogue. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cantala?
Yes, I'm just going to thank you again, Dr. Tiggen, for the presentation. I'll try to move us along as quickly as possible. Will teachers and staff with accommodations who receive the vaccine still be able to teach virtually?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Participation in the vaccination won't impact, you know, their accommodations.
Okay. And then do we expect the plan for fall or spring sports to change?
No, ma'am. The intent is for the fall and, you know, subsequent and spring sports to go on as planned. Specifically, fall is the next one coming up on the first week in February, but we expect it to go on as planned. With following our, I'd be very clear that it's following our health plan specifically around athletics.
Okay, thank you for that. Were vaccinations originally part of the expanded return to in-person plan in October? I think Dr. Cashwell covered that, but I'm not sure.
No, ma'am, they were not a part of it. We had no indication as to when that vaccine would actually be available for anyone, much less staff. I'm not sure, did I not answer the question?
Yes, yes, it did. I'm just wondering if you're cutting out for my colleagues as well, because my sound went in and out. Is our school funding, or will our school funding be tied to the decision and rollout of the expansion of in-person learning?
We've received no indication from the VDOE or anyone that we would be, that funding would be impacted at this point.
Okay, and then, let me see, you answered that. Is there any current consideration or mention anywhere in our policy, because I couldn't find it, of any virtual buffer time when we return from spring break?
No, ma'am, there's been no discussion around, you know, the week after spring break, and, you know, I would anticipate, though, that the vaccine, you know, if our staff has been vaccinated, that that would probably not be something that would be a recommendation, but I can't speak for the whole committee.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring it forward, because that's those, I've heard that in telephone conversations and email. I've heard from staff and bus drivers about students who might not follow the guidelines when we do return to in-person. Can you tell me where are these expectations addressed for students?
Yes, ma'am. We, there was a Code of Conduct addendum that was passed by the board earlier than, in the fall, and it was when students opted for in-person learning, that was part of what they signed and agreed to, was adhering to the requirements for wearing masks on buses in the classrooms in schools.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I have a question about the secondary calendar. Are the two asynchronous days at the end of the quarter still asynchronous for secondary?
Yes, ma'am, they would stay asynchronous. Those days were at the end of the nine weeks and the semester, and the additional need for being asynchronous was to set up their classrooms, and we would expect that they would still do that and be prepared for the return of students.
Okay, in the interest of time, I'll yield the floor. Thank you so much, Dr. Tiggen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. Mrs. Shea?
Yeah, let me know if I start. Mine's been freezing and coming in and out, so if I cut out, let me know. All right. Dr. Tiggen, can you share with me what the impact of utilizing our nurses are on the community health line, timeline? So if we didn't assist to help expedite this community health timeline, what would those impacts be?
I don't know that I can quantify the impact. I know that, right, you know, the, our county doesn't have nurses. I mean, most localities don't have nurses, even if they have an employee wellness center or something like that, or a health clinic for their employees, they just don't have the number of staff. And as late as this morning in the news, you know, some of the stories were about the need of localities to draw on the school nurses, because that's where the majority of available nurses are. Other nurses, if they're working in healthcare, are tied up at this time as well. So, you know, while I can't quantify it, I mean, it's definitely something that's within, that is a conversation out, not only in Henrico, but outside Henrico.
And I can, hi, can you hear me? Hi, Melissa Varey from the Health District. Hi, Melissa Varey from the Health District. I would just like to add that even today on the governor's press conference regarding, you know, not just vaccination, but other things, he, as he has been doing, he put out the call, we need every available clinician. If we really want to get vaccine into arms as fast as it needs to happen, we are needing to mobilize as many people who can vaccinate as we possibly can. So even as we are, you know, working on getting EMTs able to vaccinate, making sure that we're enabling our pharmacies to have vaccine to vaccinate, anyone with the number of vaccinations that we have to have in between now and the summer, we are trying to bring out as many as we possibly can, so that we can get as much vaccine in arms, so that we can get to herd immunity. So really, it is, it's a statewide call.
Thank you. My apologies a little bit on my delay, I'm having some connectivity issues over here. So, so as we look at this ballpark estimation, by the way, Ms. Ogden, do we need to pause to officially do the?
We actually do. I was gonna, I was, we do have a public hearing planned at 5:00, it was supposed to start five minutes ago. I'm going to, we'll just pause in our agenda and we'll get right back to it, because this is obviously a very important topic. But I'm just, does anyone know if we have any speakers for our 5:30 public hearing? We do not? Because I'm wondering whether we need to read the script and go through the whole thing if we don't have any speakers.
Megan says yes.
We do, okay. So I will. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing to solicit public input for the proposed revisions to our 2018 to 2025 strategic plan. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with the School Board first. Mrs. Harris, do we have anyone signed up? No? Okay, thank you. We will follow that list first, which there is not one. We ask that any speakers who have arrived to come to the laptop set at the back of the auditorium, use the microphone, clearly state your name or neighborhood or school affiliation. Once you finish speaking, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form located on the table on the back of the auditorium. Due to health concerns, hand sanitizer is provided. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system, and speakers will have three-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining. We ask that you stop speaking when the light turns red. The School Board is here tonight to hear from anyone who would like to speak on the strategic plan, and speakers should speak directly to the Board. We appreciate any attendance tonight and the input. And do we have any speakers for the strategic plan? Come one, come all.
Madam Chair, there are no speakers present.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We have a, our next public hearing at 6:00 PM to have input on redistricting. So what we will do is we will go back to our discussion on the Health Committee and pause at 6:00 for the public hearing. So, Mrs. Shea, feel free to continue.
Thank you. Okay, so, Dr. Tiggen, when we look at vaccinating our staff, how many days do we anticipate the first dose, a single dose to take? Like, what, how many days are we talking?
Well, and maybe, maybe Dr. Varey is better one to address this. I'm happy to if she, but I would think that having a medical professional, Dr. Varey?
I guess I'm wondering, were you speaking about how many, how long it would take to get through all the nurses we have signed up? Or, sorry?
No, I think she was talking about immunization, like, the timeline of, with the Moderna vaccine, you know, the first shot.
Oh, sure, all right.
Mrs. Shea, I think your question was really, how many people, like, in a day?
Yeah, so, do we anticipate it taking four days to do our staff? Do we anticipate it taking two weeks to do our staff in terms of actually administering the vaccine?
Dr. Tiggen, I can help you with that. I believe we received, or we're anticipating having in hand somewhere around 3,500 doses to start off with of the Moderna vaccine. We have, starting off, 32 vaccinators for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, working in two shifts, starting at 8:00 in the morning and going till 8:00 at night. And a vaccinator can give approximately 10 vaccines per hour. So hoping that 320 vaccines will get given each hour that we're there for the 12 hours all three days.
I will add that the one thing that, the one limiting factor that everyone is subject to, beyond the nurses, beyond all of the staff, beyond all of the logistics, is we have to get the vaccine from the federal government. So as long as we get what we ordered, that's the one caveat I'll give about everything with vaccination, is as long as we are able to get allocated what we have requested, then those numbers should be solid. The one, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I put that out there.
Awesome, I appreciate that. I gave.
I just want to clarify, too, that while teachers are, our teachers have access this next week, our Henrico firefighters, paramedics, they also have access to this window of time for their vaccinations.
I gave the analogy to, when I was talking to a constituent earlier today, it's kind of like a rope, you know, there's a lot of levels of red tape in the government agencies, up the ladder from where we are, that this vaccine has to come down to, and we're kind of like the end of the rope, and if somebody higher up than we do jerks it, you know, we kind of get flung around. And so I understand that, you know, we're, this is provided that everything ahead of us, you know, happens like it should. So if it's going to take, I don't know, let's say, four to five days of vaccination for our employees, and then you said that after two, since we are getting the Moderna vaccine instead of the Pfizer vaccine, we get 50% effectiveness after two weeks, correct?
Yeah, that 50% effectiveness, you should start getting the effectiveness at two weeks, and by four weeks, you should be at 50%. Somewhere in that two to four weeks, at four weeks, you get the second vaccine, and two weeks after that, we expect you to be at 95% efficacy, and that would be the total of six weeks from your first shot.
And that reason is why, and that's a really big reason why we really want folks to go through both, the whole series as much as possible, or I know that some folks are just thinking they'll get one and that'll be enough, but we really are encouraging folks to go all the way through.
Dr. Varey, can you briefly talk to us, very briefly, about the shift in the focus to the in-school mitigation strategies as opposed to community spread for our metrics?
Sure. I think there are a couple of different things that have come up, and you said briefly, right? Well, what's up? What we've seen is that, a couple of things. Number one is that where, there was an MMWR article that came out recently, about school exposures in Mississippi, that looked at, that found that what was more important, or where these kids were getting their infection, these under-18s, wasn't, as long as there is mask-wearing and mitigation going on in the schools, where they were getting infected wasn't in school, it was all the stuff around school, or it was in instances where there wasn't very good mask-wearing. In addition, if you look at what we're talking about in terms of the, where we're looking at our outbreaks, even in Henrico, we're not seeing transmission occurring in classrooms, mitigation, we're seeing introductions from teachers or students acquiring it outside or from outside activities, but not in-school procedures. So all of these things, kind of all of these data points coming together, are just really suggesting that regardless of what's going on, it's not regardless, it's not that regardless, the stronger determinant of whether you're going to have school-based transmission, yes, this community transmission just increases the probability that you're going to get an introduction, but the in-school mitigation is what prevents that introduction from going anywhere. So it's really the bigger barrier, regardless of what your, even as you increase probability of introduction, if your mitigations are good, you're still going to hit, you're still going to have less transmission, or not less transmission, you're still going to be, you're not going to be seeing the increases of transmission that we worry about, that we talk about.
So, Dr. Tiggen, you mentioned that in our childcare that's been utilizing our schools, we haven't had teacher-to-student transmission, or student-to-student transmission, or student-to-teacher transmission, is that correct? Did I hear you correctly?
Correct, correct. I don't know of any. They have reported to me when they had cases, and none of the cases, it was always community, someone, a community spread coming into the classroom, and then through contact tracing and being able to have people quarantined, we had no spread. You know, even though we put people out, you know, that's a given with contact tracing, you're likely to have people that are put out on, you know, for extended time, but there was not spread to those individuals. So it wasn't really an outbreak, because remember, an outbreak is one person to another person within that school environment.
Right. And does the concentration of students in the, that are in the childcare in our schools, is that similar to the concentration of students that would be in our classrooms? of students that would be in our classrooms?
Um, yes, I would say based on the number we would have coming back that it's, it's, you know, they have, they may even have more, but they're still following our health plan and all of our mitigation efforts. They, they've been using exactly what our teachers use and will use.
Thank you. You know, when I look at all these pieces, we've had to, we've been listening to our health professionals and our Health Committee, you know, all along the way, you know, I'm a professional educator, you know, none of us up here are, um, doctors, eh, medical doctors, I should say. And, you know, so, you know, we really have been listening to our, our vetted health experts. You can find anybody saying anything on the internet, and I understand that. But when we look at our vetted health experts that have been, um, advising us, we really have to trust them. And, you know, we've watched, I mean, think of the journey we've been on since July. We've watched as our understanding of the virus and transmission has changed. As with that, the, those, the metrics have changed too. And I know that it's frustrating for our community. It's frustrating for me, but, you know, we have to keep the metrics up to be our best understanding and we have to trust our health experts on that. And so we started in July with pretty much no metrics. And then we moved to the burden metric. And then we moved to, uh, the school metrics from the V D H. And now we're understanding as we nuance those metrics, now our health experts are telling us that we need to be putting more focus on in-building mitigation. And I know for some people that sounds scary because it's not what we've been hearing. But I have to trust that, you know, the health experts. And so, you know, I know we have a really good mitigation strategy in place. I am really excited that our people are being able to get the vaccine. And so I look forward to continuing this discussion on the twenty-eighth to see, um, you know, see where we are with the vaccine and, and how we can get our students, uh, back in school, uh, and, um, back in the building, I should say, because school never stopped. Um, and really trust our health experts, which, uh, which I am not. Uh, and so, um, Dr. Cashwell, I would ask, uh, if we continue on the timeline that we are, um, I would really like to see some additional in, in-person supports for our students, um, until we're able to, uh, put everybody back in the building, um, for our students who are struggling, whether that be academically and/or social emotionally. And, um, I, I think we need to offer kind of more rigorous in-person supports, uh, for these students.
Mrs. Shay, I'll respond to that. Absolutely. We, um, our, our team overseeing our school leaders and working directly with our schools centrally have been working with our principals to, um, help them understand how it is a priority just even beyond the groups we've already targeted. So early childhood, E L L, our C T E courses have already been engaging in a high level of limited in-person instruction on a regular basis since September, but looking at increasing it beyond those groups. And I know that's already happened in a number of our buildings, but particularly this, um, additional delay has caused us to double down on that effort and look at how we can offer opportunities in a limited fashion to students in person beyond the original gro, groups targeted.
Yeah, thank you. And I think when we look at this, um, I think we need to lean heavily, uh, listening to our teachers of the individual students because no one knows, you know, no one from our school system knows our students like their teachers who truly care about these students and know what they need. And we have to look beyond just typical classifications of who might need what and truly look at the student and lit, and have our teachers tell us, you know, who is, who is struggling and who needs, um, who needs some extra in-person support, whether, again, whether it be academically or a social, emotional connection. I know I've had a lot of parents reach out to me, um, kind of on both sides of the fence. Um, I think A D H D is a, a, a great, um, suggest, or a great example. Some parents with students with A D H D have reached out and said, virtual school is the best my student has ever been doing. It is a great fit for them. They are thriving. This is what they've needed all along. Well, I've also had parents reach out to me whose student has A D H D and say, my, we can't do this at all. This is so hard. This is the hard, so, um, you know, I think we can't just look at five oh four plans or I E P plans. We really have to look at the individual student, even a student who may not have, uh, the, any, um, you know, may not have a five oh four to say who is struggling, who needs help, even if it's not academically and it's social emotionally. I'll yield.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. Anybody, um, any other board members have a comment? Thank you, Dr. Tygen and, um, Dr. Vare and, um, Ms. Gilbert for your, um, report. It is, uh, it's an exciting time in, in a, in such a bad environment which we've been in to have something posit, and I don't want to use the word positive, uh, something exciting to look forward to. And as, as having our staff, uh, inoculated is amazing. And I, I think our nurses are heroes for being willing to, uh, do this mass inoculation. If you, um, we're setting the bar once again high for our staff. And I, I'm just excited that we're able to, to do this and pull, and hopefully next week we'll be pulling it off. And that gives the teachers the protection that they need in order to get back in the classroom. And, and, you know, we have, uh, been supporting our staff for so long and the staff has just been working so hard to make all of this happen for our students that I feel like we're finally seeing the light at the end of a very long tunnel. And while I know our community is hurting and our community is really ready to get back in the classroom, I, I think we have, um, we have got to prioritize getting our, our teachers vaccinated. So I'm excited that this will happen. And at our next board meeting, I am hoping we will be laying out a timeline for returning to the classroom, getting, um, our students, especially the ones who, um, who need it, to be back in the classroom and, and begin to move forward out of this, uh, long nightmare that we've all been a part of. Uh, but anyway, thank you again, Dr. Tygen. Does anybody else have a comment before we move forward with our agenda? Okay, um.
Ms. Ogden, Ms. Ogden, I don't have a comment as much as, just to, to ask one question about, another question about vaccinations.
Sure.
The timing of it, um, we won't really discuss any of the timing until the twenty-eighth. Am I correct?
What, what I meant was, uh, when we meet on the twenty-eighth, uh, it is my understanding that all the vaccinations hopefully will be concluded. And we will get an update from our staff, uh, on how that went. I mean, what we're waiting on is the promise of a vaccine to be delivered this week. And, you know, things happen and we're hopeful that that happens. Um, but it's my understanding, Dr. Tygen and/or Dr. Cashwell, correct me if I'm wrong, that at the next meeting, we will have an update on how it went.
For the first administration.
Right, exactly.
Yes, just wanted to clarify.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the, so the timeline, when will a timeline be released or discussed, potentially released to the public about any return expansion of, um, in-person learning?
Dr. Cashwell, do you want to address that?
Certainly. So, uh, you know, as, as Dr. Tygen just said, we have a timeline laid out that we're hopeful we'll be able to maintain. And I think Dr. Vare pointed out that it includes even getting the actual vaccine in hand. So we will certainly be updating the board, uh, between now and the twenty-eighth. But the intention on that progress, um, and, and any changes there. But hope to be able to have a discussion with this board on the, uh, at the twenty-eighth meeting in relation to where we are, where we see next steps and, uh, the timeline, uh, going forward.
Okay, and, and then, yes, that does answer my question.
Yeah, we wouldn't be releasing a timeline, uh, before then. We need to get through that next step to know more.
This is Afeesh. I did have a question earlier. I referenced a few questions, um, that I had specifically on the clinical side, making sure that we have, um, physicians available. Of course, nurses have to be under physicians in order to disseminate. And, uh, the other question was around understanding the admin of processes, administrative processes that come into play when we have sort of this enormous effort. So those questions, um, I was expecting an answer for, um, on the twenty-eighth. So I want to make sure I understand answers. When will the answers to those questions happen? I think that it's important to have the answers to those questions, uh, prior to the twenty-eighth, to be honest. Um, now that I'm understand, have a better understanding of what's going to be shared on the twenty-eighth. Uh, can you help me understand how that information will be shared to board members? Because that's a critical piece of the entire process, understanding the specific roles that our nurses play, the, that they will be under, the liabilities that take place, um, or hopefully won't take place. Making sure, you know, is the nurse also responsible for monitoring adverse reactions after giving the shot? And will a physician be on site? So those are the questions that I have. They're probably a little bit clinical, a little bit administrative, all falling under the medical umbrella. So are we gonna get that before the twenty-eighth or is that, uh, something that we'll talk about offline?
We can talk about offline as we have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to speak at the same time. I was just gonna say certainly I hear your questions, Mrs. Atkins, and we can work, uh, certainly to provide you the detailed answers you've asked for, um, subsequent to this meeting. I, I don't have some of that information on hand and I want to be able to give you the most thorough answer possible. And it certainly can be before the twenty-eighth we can get back to you.
And, and Ms. Atkins, just to follow up on what you said, I would imagine that that information would also be shared with employees as to, um, you know, what's gonna be in place when they come to get vaccinated because they're gonna need to know. Um, is there going to be assistance for anyone, you know, and what kind of supports are there for employees? I think that's part of the process, would it not be?
It will be. Sorry, it's a little second.
Okay.
So that's probably, um, oh, sorry.
That's to our staff and to the public, actually, I would think it, um, as part of the process. Am I right?
Yeah, I'm not, it's a little second. I don't have all of those details in front of me right now. I do know that, um, they are being worked out with county, between county and H, and H P S right now and making sure those are all laid out. And actually, a fair amount of it's being laid out, um, in the planning process. So I, and while we could bore the public with it, they want all of it. Um, I think, um, that should not be problematic to, to have for you guys offline. I'm just not poised right now. And there may still be some pieces that are being laid out in terms of roles and things like that, um, that, but I don't, I don't see that as being a problem to share before next meeting. But obviously I should, I should probably let Robin speak to that.
And I think that the incident, the regional incident management team, they're still pulling together and finalizing plans. I mean, they've done an amazing job in two, you know, not even two days to have pulled together what they have. But we'll share more information as we know it from the incident management team. But I can assure you that all Ts will be crossed and Is will be dotted before we proceed. And so that I can assure you of, Ms. Atkins.
Absolutely. Mrs. Shay, did you have another question?
Yeah, this might be for, uh, uh, somewhat whoever on the team, maybe Ms. Gilbert. Uh, so I've gotten a lot of questions around what will our nurses' roles be between the two vote doses, between giving our staff the two doses of employ, of, uh, vaccine?
So the nursing staff, when, if, while we're not vaccinating right now, um, we will be back in the schools tending to the children. They're there doing limited in-person. Um, we're still following up with students that will be returning to us, hopefully in the very, very near future because we miss them terribly, um, making sure we have everything in place for them to return their health plans. We're participating in I E P and five oh four meetings, um, to ensure their, their readiness. Um, and like I said, we do have students in school, so we are tending to their needs.
Yeah, and they, they will be giving the vaccines over this course as well.
Yep.
Any other questions, board members? Uh, Ms. Kinsella, Ms. Atkins, did you have plenty of opportunity to add to your questions that you had? Ms. Kinsella, did you have another one? I thought you might. I wanted to be sure.
I did. I had one in terms that, and I'm sorry if it's been addressed, that my audio is going in and, in and out today. Um, do we, have we heard about the hierarchy, if there is one, for employees to get vaccinated? Um, because I know, I, I know I've received quite a few comments about how is that gonna work? And I know that's as to some of what Ms. Atkins is saying, but if it's just a yes, no, um, can anyone answer that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we, we have, we have gone through our staff and there's been a hierarchy determined based on, um, their current work and their expected work. And so H R has been working through that with school leadership, um, to help identify those individuals. And so per, per the request of the Health Department, we have prioritized. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then I'll just wait, um, and, and let our frequently asked, our F A Q come out. Frequently asked questions, um, cover some of the other, um, deep, more detailed items of concern. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kinsella, um, and thank you to the, uh, Health Committee. Um, we are going to shift gears quickly to our public hearing on redistricting that is supposed to convene about right now. Um, and, uh, we will pick up our meeting after that. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing to solicit, solicit public input on the changing attendance boundaries in two priority areas. The usage of additional capacity at the newly expanded Holiday Elementary School and addressing overcapacity issues at Colonial Trail and Rivers Edge Elementary Schools. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first and then allow anyone else who wishes to speak to do so after we have completed the list. We ask that each speaker come to the laptop set in the back of their auditorium and use the microphone. Clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. Once you finish speaking, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form located on the table in the back of the auditorium. Hand sanitizer is provided. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system on the platform. Um, speakers will have a three-minute time limit. The light will turn green as you begin with your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining. And we ask that you stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here to hear, uh, from you tonight and the community at which, um, and speaker should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding, but carefully consider your comments and thoughts. We appreciate your attendance and if the first speaker would stack, step up to the laptop.
And Mrs. Ogden, I do not believe we have any speakers present here, but I do believe there may have been a disruption to our live stream. And so I'm gonna pause for a moment to get confirmation of that before we would move on to invite any speakers to the podium.
All right.
If we could pause, please. And so Mrs. Ogden did invite anyone who's here to speak on our redistricting, uh, public hearing to come forward and speak. At the moment, we do not have any, uh, speakers coming forward. We'll continue to pause for a moment, see if we have any speakers coming forward.
I would like to invite anyone who is here for a public comment to proceed to the laptop for a public comment on redistricting.
We, it looks like we do have one citizen here who's coming forward to provide comment related to the redistricting public hearing, perhaps?
Is there anyone here?
We're determining whether the citizen is here for public comment on redistricting.
Is she here for that?
Yeah.
She's here for that?
Like, I have a question about.
On redistricting?
Mm-hmm.
She is.
I got it.
No, I'm sorry.
I didn't want you approaching.
Yeah, I know.
Just sit and.
And comment.
Address the board through that computer, yeah.
There you go.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, but I just had a question in regards to redistricting. As far as, is it different as far as the zoning and as far as the enrollment policy goes? Is it permissible or allowable in the state of Virginia to allow students to attend Henrico County Public Schools if they're out of state? Oh, okay, I just shared my comments. So it's in a public hearing, like, I'm hearing your question, okay.
You can share all your comments.
Okay. So I didn't, wasn't here for the part of the redistricting. I thought it was going to talk first and then I can comment on what they're talking about.
If you want to dump this to tab in, when you do have any concerns, anything about the speaker, you speak on it for the board and I'll address you.
Okay, okay.
But you can go ahead and speak, and go ahead and sign in.
Okay.
And give your call.
Okay. So that was basically my comment as far as the redistricting. I wasn't here for the, the part where you all were talking about it. So as far as my comment goes, I don't know if you are, all are planning to like, to change enrollment policies in the future. I was just concerned about that. So that's one of my concerns as far as the redistricting, Henrico County. So I wasn't sure if this was a public forum at the time, so I'll sign my name, and then you can get in touch with me. We'll help you with those stuff. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and we will have a staff member work with you on getting your answers to your questions.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And in order to, are there any other speakers on redistricting? Okay, then that concludes our public hearing on redistricting. And I wanted to note that we are going to table our, due to the lateness of the hour, our, am I correct, Reverend Cooper? Yes, okay. We're going to take our policies that need to be considered. We will do that at our next meeting. And do we need, Dr. Cashwell, do, are we on a time crunch for the temporary suspension of school board policies, or can that wait as well?
Certainly, we could cover these items at the next meeting in essence of time.
And how about grants as well? Those can wait as well for two weeks? Okay, great. Then what we will do is I will note that in our public forum, citizens were invited to provide feedback via the online submission, and all of our board members have received those and had the opportunity to read those comments prior to our meeting. We did have submissions in our public forum and items for our strategic plan and redistricting. So we appreciate anyone who did reach out, taking the time to do that, and doing that online. With that, I would like to jump to any unfinished business? Any new business to be introduced by the board members? And I will announce that our next meeting will be January 28th, 2021. One o'clock work session at this point in time, we'll determine the time later. But we'll put it in the books for one o'clock, and until then, our meeting is adjourned.